I'm going to call the Lennox School Committee meeting of February 8th to order. The week 2022. And the first, you know, order of business is I want to let you know that we're going to have limited public comment because we really want the most of the time to be devoted to deliberations of the committee. If you wish to speak, the time limit will be a minute. Depending on, you know, how many people are here, if we have to, we'll cut you off, which you don't really want to do. But we will have to limit the timing. And when you log in or when we promote you to a panelist and give you permission to speak, please state your name and your address. And, and assistants superintendent will be promoting, depending on the numbers of people, will be promoting a couple of people who kind of be in a waiting, a waiting situation. So that said, there's, I have had some correspondence, which I'll get to after we've had the public comment. So you can go ahead and promote. It'll be, do you want to speak? Yeah. So why don't we, why don't we start with Mary Cherry? And then you promote somebody online and we'll go back to it.
Am I fine just speaking from here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. My name is Mary Cherry. I'm the Lennox Education Association President. And I thought I'd just give, I have a couple of just kind of background information to give the committee. And then a couple of questions that I have for the committee that I hope they'll think about in their deliberations. I just thought I'd give you a snapshot of what masking looks like at LMHS. The vast majority of our students are adhering to the masking requirements with little to no plus. Students who don't wear masks correctly or challenge masking, from my vantage point, that appears to be more about the rule than less about the masks. I also wanted to address the fact that you have an MOA regarding this. And we recognize from the LA school committee is exercising their rights underneath that MOA. I just want to point out that at the time of the MOA, which was in August, it was really unclear that both vaccinated and unvaccinated people were able to transmit the virus. And in fact, the guidance from DESI has changed around this. And it appears, if you've been looking at the paper, that that's probably going to happen again as our governor has, has intimated. These are the questions that I hope that you will keep in your, in your thoughts. Will there be a clear plan that will be communicated clearly to staff, students and parents? We had students show up today announcing that masking was optional because they had not read an email. After five days of isolation, how will we monitor the masking requirement of the five additional days for the students who will need to adhere to that? And if or when we have a large outbreak, what's the plan there, large amounts of students and/or staff out? And if or when it's deemed we need masks again, what's the plan? So those are really my questions that I hope you'll, you'll keep in mind as you, as you deliberate this. Thank you.
Yep, you can promote the first online person.
Go ahead, Bethany. I have unmuted you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so, oh, sorry, Bethany, I live on Hubbard Street. And I speak as a mom, sorry, I prepared this in advance, be sure, okay. I speak as a mom of two high-risk kids. One is a Mars student and one a toddler still ineligible to be vaccinated. Prior to the pandemic, both have been hospitalized in ICUs on oxygen due to common respiratory viruses. It is my fervent hope that the school board will consider children and families like mine and the different circumstances of the elementary school where roughly 50% remain unvaccinated and whose youngest students are as yet still ineligible for protection. Pediatric hospitalization rates have increased with Omicron and potential long-term consequences even for children without comorbidities aren't insignificant. While it may initially seem that masking, masking policies for the high school and middle school can be considered separately than Mars. If COVID has taught us anything, it's that our world and community is fully interconnected. Schools with masking optional policies are three times as likely to experience outbreaks within the school. And that's from a study pre-Omicron. And the community at large also experiences greater transmission rates. I beseech the board to hold off on the unmasking of students until community rates decrease and the youngest students are eligible to have the protection that so many are now able to take for granted. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to say something.
Bethany.
Do you know Bethany's last name?
Strass.
Thank you.
Yeah, Robert Oldenson, Long Beach with L.A. I was looking at the criteria you had there for following some asking policy being 80% vaccinated. My question to you is, what do you consider fully vaccinated? Most of the latest research now suggests that you should at least have boosters or any vaccination infection against Omicron is basically zero. So are you going to follow your own initiative based on this or the state guidelines that have literally been behind the curve since day one of this pandemic? That's one question. The other piece is there are other criteria that should be considered too, being the community test positivity rate currently in Lennox, I believe it's over 10%. Pittsfield is over 17. Nor County is in the 20%. What the CDC considers lower risk is sub 5%, so I don't think we should actually just stick to a single criteria, especially that vaccination rate criteria unless it is populated on fully boosted because effectively if it's only single, Johnson Johnson or two, two dose regimen, then at least as far as Omicron is concerned, then you have a 0% vaccination rate. Passes over references to cell
Okay.
research document recently, so I'd rather we are ahead of the curve than behind the curve.
Thank you. Melissa, do you have somebody else to promote?
Joan Goldberg Munch, please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. Joan Goldberg Munch, 97 West Street in Lennox. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to commend the board and our fine educators and administration. I think this is a good time to be looking at our policies and looking at the Berkshire County numbers. And I think my, my, my great hope is we can have this conversation as a community and it's not parents versus parents or children versus children. We really want the best for our children's staff administration. I'm confident everyone on the call feels that way. I did look up it, the latest in the end of January, both the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics are still recommending masking in school. And I looked at the American Academy of Pediatrics for a lot of good information. They're the experts. I'm not. And the two other things, I believe, Ms. Cherry, if I'm right, that the staff has been at least straw pulled about how they feel. I was just wondering, especially in the middle school, high school, if anyone's spoken to the students. If there's even just a general sense of how they feel about the masks. I, I would be curious to know. And the third thing I want to say is staffing, staffing, staffing. I am concerned with the lack of substitutes that if, when teachers are sick, our students aren't learning. And so being that the vaccine definitely helps lessen the disease, it doesn't eradicate from getting it. That I just feel the more, the more staff that has some protection, the more the students will learn too. But I thank you and I'm not going to fight anyone regardless of how it turns out.
Hey, Joan.
Hi, Campbell Bridges, Sherwood Drive. I guess we've only got a minute, so I'll just stick to three quick points. One, I was just at a doctor appointment at the Medical Arts Center at Berkshire Medical Center just a few weeks ago and my doctor there said the week prior, they announced it over the, announced over the loudspeakers that all beds were full. So to my mind, to even be discussing this, I, again, like Joan, I don't want to be dramatic, but to even be discussing this at this point seems, in light of that alone, just seems a little premature. Second, I think I'm just going to reiterate what Robert said and what they've all said. It's that Omicron has shown the highest vaccine evasion rate so far. So again, it's like, you know, the clouds are still in the sky and we're talking about putting away the umbrella. And then finally to the point about optional masking, masking only really stops youth from spreading it. Mask, using a mask to protect yourself is not nearly as effective. So to call it optional masking is really, it's not an option for anyone who still considers they want to wear a mask because they're only really protected by the people, you know, who wear a mask. They don't really protect themselves as well. So again, it's a misnomer to call it optional because it's not an option for anyone at risk at the school, you know, who's worried about, you know, coming down with this. So that's, I'll just leave it to those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have somebody to promote?
Tanya DeFries, please unmute, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Tanya DeFries. I live on West Street in Lennox. I thank you for this time. I've done a lot of research on this. Masking does more harm than good physically and psychologically, academically and socially. Not only do face masks fail to protect the healthy from getting sick, they also create serious health risks to the wearer. Breathing through a mask decreases the amount of oxygen we need to live and be healthy. It increases CO2 and toxin intake, which puts the body under stress, releasing cortisol and shutting down the immune system processes. There are several examples of video proof using a CO2 monitor and testing under the mask. The results are beyond clear and infuriating that mask wearing isn't a choice for the child's family. By wearing a mask, the exhaled viruses will not be able to escape and will concentrate in the nasal passages, enter the olfactory nerves and travel to the brain. Lack of oxygen to the brain affects academic performance, and this is about our children. There's a quote from Great Barrington Declaration, which is right here in Great Barrington, Massachusetts, signed by over 60,000 doctors and scientists and nearly 900,000 concerned citizens. Those who are not vulnerable should immediately be allowed to resume life as normal. Simple hygiene measures such as hand washing and staying home when sick should be practiced by everyone. Many of us can see the short-term effects COVID has on children and adolescents. However, no one has any idea what the long-term effects will be. But for many parents, it is very concerning. It is time to unmask our children again. Where there's any risk, there must be a choice. Thank you for your time.
And do we have somebody else in the audience who wants to speak?
Amanda Shanker, Bolton Drive, Lennox. I like what I've heard a lot of people say here tonight. I'm from Alabama where the rates are really have been awful a lot of the time. I would hope that if there is a lifting of the mask mandate, that you would wait until at least the week following return from from winter break, I guess, you know, because we've seen that, right? That it tends to start after Christmas break, right? Give it time to see if I at least wait that long. And also if the, if it's lifted, and I'm, I, I don't think it should be lifted, I have to say. I kind of lean that way to the other people who are hurting. I would hope that there would be support from the faculty and administration for students who do choose to continue to wear masks, you know, and that there wouldn't be any kind of bullying or negative repercussion for those kids.
Thank you. And we're quoting Ellen Loftus.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ellen Loftus and I live on Main Street in Lennox. I have several kids throughout all the schools in Lennox. So I have a vested interest in this particular subject. My understanding is that DESI had set some guidelines for vaccination compliance. And in direct relation to those, that masking would be an option for parents, which is what I'm hoping will happen. The, this is not COVID, this, we're in the, the variant, although all my whole family is just getting over COVID, including my young children, and it was, it was like the flu. My understanding is this is not a detrimental virus for younger kids. So I'm, I'm questioning all these statistics about having to wear masks and not being vaccinated for younger kids. This is not a disease or a virus of younger kids. It's more a threat directly to me. I'm 64 years old and I'm just getting over it quite fine, unvaccinated. I would like you to unmask our children because I think parents, I do not understand why a school board can make medical decisions for our children. And I would like you to unmask them. I would like each parent, some of you parents feel very safe with your kid's mask and you'd like to continue to do that. And that should be your choice and I respect that. I ask for the same respect. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Do you have somebody else? Yep.
Max Gerkley, Stone Land Road. My only thought was I read a study from Tus medical school regarding the quality of masks in terms of the return to optional masking. So this study essentially said that if, if the people who choose to still wear masks are wearing a higher quality mask, for example, Dr. Goslin has a higher quality mask on than I do tonight. So if he, if the school can provide those masks to the students who want to stay, stay masked, I, I think that that's a great option in terms of protecting the students who want to be protected and then allowing students who really don't want to be protected necessarily for giving them that option.
Thank you, Max. Do we have anybody to promote?
So I have two that would like to speak, but I am having difficulty promoting them to endless.
I'll promote Amy. Okay, Amy. Go ahead, Amy. Unmute yourself. Maybe you've got your Oh, sir, are, are you?
You're talking to me?
Go ahead, Robert.
Well, thank you very much. Robert Dorr, I live in Pittsfield, but I've got a daughter who lives in Lennox and goes to Lennox High as a junior there. And, you know, listening to some of these comments people are ma- making, I do appreciate the fact that the, the school board has opened this up for conversation. I think that's really great. I think it's important that we do this. I'm a proponent of choice in all aspects of our culture. We've been brought up that way. It's sort of the way we do things. I can understand initially when we were affected by the first blast of COVID and we had the 15 days to stop the spread and now it's kind of continued for a little longer than anybody would have liked. I know that the children have a hard time with masks. I know that there are certain things about masks that affect children in negative ways. And I think that the school board needs to understand, or probably already does, that there are benefits to be held by having children unmasked and being able to see each other and being able to see the teacher's face and watch the teacher's mouth as, as he or she moves it and explains things. I know the children, once they leave the class and leave the school, they take their masks off and they breathe whatever they've been breathing all day long and they are in close contact with each other. I don't see why it's necessary to continue that inside the classroom. A lot of times students will bring their mask down for a moment even. And as they do that, that indicates any, any positivity that the mask would have had for the entire time they're in school. Once that's down, or once they put it down someplace or on a surface, then whatever benefit it has is going to be erased. So I think medically and psychologically, I think it makes all the sense in the world to drop the mandate, let parents who want the mask for their children, use the mask for their children and parents who don't, let, let, let the mask drop and let it go. That's my fervent hope that we can have a choice. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Jim Brook, the father of a kindergarten divorce. And I'm in favor of taking off the masks. I think the terminology is there. My son is a late talker, a easy faces. So not just for the girl with socialization and verbal. And coincidentally, my wife is a non-English speaker, so we help her a lot if she could see the faces and the lips of the people she's talking to. That's it.
Thank you. And we have one last speaker and that's Amy. And she's there. I'm not having any luck promoting her.
Oh, she's on the panel list now. Is she, does she have a screen on?
What about her screen? Is her screen off? You know, her camera? There's two cameras now. Okay, well, we're going to go, we'll skip Amy and we'll go to Everett. Yeah. Everett.
Everett, you are unmuted.
There we go. Hi, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Everett Lamb, 90 Dunmore Court here in Lennox. I am a board certified pediatrician. If, if I could just weigh in on the medical perspective, which seems to be lacking a bit from the conversation. I have colleagues, I have friends, I know family members who have now perished from this horrible illness that's been ongoing. I know children who have been hospitalized. I think we can't turn a blind eye at this point to what is still happening in the United States. We've lost nearly a million citizens to this horrific disease of which we've never seen in our lifetimes. So while I do think that this will be an appropriate conversation, I don't think this is really the appropriate time for us to consider whether we mask or unmask now. I think the science has been relatively clear. We know that hand washing, we know that physical distancing and we know that masking has prevented hundreds of thousands of additional people from dying. That's children who are in pediatric hospitals at this point. It's adults who are in hospitals. And it's our teachers and our administrators and our staff in the schools who are, some of whom are immunosuppressed. Children are immunosuppressed. This is a true public health emergency. So I appreciate the board willingness to hear all sides of the conversation. And I hope that you'll do what's right by the community at this time. This may be a different discussion four to six weeks from now, but not currently based upon the numbers of cases that we're still seeing in the community. Thanks for the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you, Everett. Okay, that's the end of of a comment. And now it's time for us to so. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So I did have letters from Lisa Hansen and Monica Joyce, both of whom are hoping that, and I think every member got these letters.
Yeah.
And they are hoping that we will not be unmasking at this time. So we're, we're faced tonight with, you know, a decision about what we want to do. Our high school has reached the 81%, of people have are vaccinated. So according to DESI's current guidelines, we can request a waiver from them and, and go on. There were additional things I think raised last week when we set this meeting up about what we might do with some of the other COVID things, COVID restrictions that were placed, like the cafeteries and so on. So I don't know how we want to approach this in terms of you know, moving forward with the discussion. We asked our superintendent to do a survey. He did that. So we have survey information. We have information about this other schools statewide that have received permission to open and some of them are open, some of them are not, in terms of not masking, if they have optional masking. Some started and then went back. We have a number of things that have been sent to us by committee members to look at. So I think the way to get the conversation going would be for a motion to be made of one sort or another that we can then discuss.
Can I kind of make just a quick alternate suggestion? Because I think there were a couple of questions from our participants that I think might be helpful. And I think, I didn't realize, I didn't think to ask them until it was brought up at a conference session. So for example, when, when DESI put forward the threshold of 80% vaccination, at that point, what the protocol that was out there was one, two, right? And then you were fully vaccinated and then we started with the booster. So has there been any update clarification or commentary from DESI about what constitutes fully vaccinated? I literally was digging into materials for two days and trying to read everything, but it starts to get all jumbled, so. You have a thought on that, Mark?
Yeah, the latest information that DESI provided has been through webinars around training and different protocols and question and answer sessions that go along with those webinars. And that question was asked of DESI and DESI has stood with the, the state's definition, which is the two-shot sequence if you did that or a one-shot if you did the J and J. But they are not requiring boosters to be considered fully vaccinated and stay consistent with these definitions.
And then can I ask the second part of the question? Because I think I was actually had some people reaching out to me from the committee and the question was, because we convene this conversation because of the DESI right that says we can ask for the waiver at 80%. We currently, I know we're almost at the end or midway through February, have a, have a state mandate unless we get a waiver until February 28th. So that's the place we're at right now at this moment. So relative to Morris, we have not met the threshold of 81%. And there's some debate there too, with how this school factors into that. So are, am I correct that our decision-making, at least insofar as from now until February 28th, is based on the middle high school and not Morris schools? I know we talked about some other things we want to discuss about policy, but that's right. What we're allowed to do under the regulations of DESI is really only ask for the waiver. Am I correct? Are we on the same page about that?
That's DESI's standard now is that it only would apply to schools that reach an 80% threshold unless they issue new guidance at some point in the future, which obviously is signaling a little bit in, in the news as of late. However, nothing has been shared one way or the other. But in our, our school community, we do have 81% of our school community. And the school community is defined as the combination of students and staff in that building divided by the number of overall student and staff in that building. And so we have reached LMHS, but they leverage it at Morris. And at Morris, we do have to count the preschool students because they do go to school in that building. So every individual in that space is counted in that, that town division.
So we're at this point
69%.
convening to discuss relative to the current regulations. And not to say I'm limiting anyone else's discussion, I kind of wanted to just get a sense of where we're at. Thank you.
It's okay with you, Bob. I'll make a motion to start and I circulated this document to the group. So you've seen the proposed policy. We can print it out, but we won't print it out. So I guess I will make a motion that we consider this draft COVID policy, which I won't read word for word and I'll summarize so everybody who's listening in is also, goes what we're talking about. Before I go through, I just want to make two quick comments. One is I really appreciated all of the, the public comment was made. And I actually want to acknowledge Ronnie for pushing so strongly last night to do it. I thought it was, it was really constructive, the, the way it happened. I'm really glad that he got that input. The, the other thing with, with respect to the public comment and what in my mind is especially important for us to grapple with, but I think was missing from a lot of the perspectives that were shared, was a question that I will summarize as compared to what. That is, you know, I, I think there's no question that there is obviously COVID in the community in, in, in many households of people here who would mention what, what they've dealt with. But it is also not the same COVID that we were dealing with two years ago. And I think it's very important that we not stay locked into the idea that that the goal of our policy is to make sure no one ever gets COVID. Because among other things with Omicron, we've Because among other things with Omicron, we've realized that that's not actually an achievable goal. And so as we think about what we're trying to accomplish, it seems to me, we have to recognize, for instance, that children are hospitalized with respiratory diseases every winter, and, and it's unfortunate, but that the rate at which they've been hospitalized by COVID even before vaccination was not higher than the rate at which hospitalization had generally occurred. The, the rate at which we've lost children to COVID has actually been lower than we've lost them to pneumonia and non-COVID pneumonia. Um, and, and so while there will undoubtedly be continued tragic events related to COVID, the question is if they look any different than what we have always seen from flu season, from among other things. Um, and if not, then I think that's where this, this discussion of on, off ramps becomes so relevant, because I think what we have to be trying to accomplish is to achieve the same sort of public health quality that we were able to achieve before the pandemic, not pull ourselves to some new higher standard that we never would have contemplated previously. Um, so on that basis, I'm, I'm proposing this policy. The, the policy is basically structured actually to facilitate exactly what Ronnie was just getting at, which is we can sort of choose what we want to talk about. Um, and so it essentially starts by saying, um, the, the Lennox policy vis a vis COVID is going to do what the law requires. Um, and then we will take the time to actually note an exception where there is something beyond that that we actually still want to do. Um, and so the, the three that I've listed here, one is, we should obviously be continuing to do the traditional common self, common sense health practices, someone could still wash their hands, that we've always done. Um, number two is, we should maintain the routine COVID safety check, the, the weekly pool testing for anyone who wants to participate. And number three is, we should keep the Joint Labor Management Committee, certainly at least through the end of this year, um, to be reviewing data and variants that might emerge and deciding if, if more action is required. Based on these comments, I actually want to, I, I think there are a few sort of friendly amendments that I would request if we went forward, that, that I think would make sense. Um, one is, it does seem to me sensible that we target something like, I guess it would be the March fourteenth date for LMHS to adopt uh the optional masking under the Desi protocol. So that would get us two weeks beyond beyond the winter break or the February break. Um, so I think that would be worth adding in. Um, second is, I think we should make very clear, a little bit to Ronnie's point, that nothing is changing for Morris, at least until Desi changes his policy February twenty eighth or later. Um, and then the third thing that I, someone mentioned this, was that, for instance, when we're doing sports, we're still governed by what MIA says. So we should also make clear that if MIA says, you know, if, if we are participating in activity whose governing body has a rule, we're certainly going to comply with that as well. So, so that's how I propose to structure our policy. Um, the, the last two elements of, in what you have here, one is to clean up things relative to the memorandum of agreement with the LEA, which would currently hold them to a higher standard, and then clear that teachers would be subject to the same choices about masking and pool testing that students would be subject to. Um, and then the third one is, is just timeline. I think, you know, for, for anything that we're asking the schools to adjust, even if it's just cafeteria layout, um, there needs to be time. And so this would say essentially administration should propose a train, you know, do a transition so that when kids get back from February break, we have made all the necessary adjustments, and then the masking to be considered two weeks after that. So I, maybe that comes in the form of a motion. The motion would be to accept the draft policy you have in front of you.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
So if I can, by way of discussion, I think, first I think I'll give my explanation, and then I'll, I'll make a motion to amend. I struggle with all due respect to having this first paragraph, because I think embedded in it is a lot of opinion information that I, you know, we've had a, you know, portrait by pediatrician that we had the benefit of hearing from. So um, to the extent that we make a decision that has dates and policies, I think we should stick to um, this is before, this is before our body, and we can vote it ever down, but one of the reasons I'm struggling with um, being able to vote it as is, is number one, I would move to strike paragraph one. Other exceptions so far as we would follow um, legal mandates at federal, state, and local authorities, because of course we're obligated to do that, and I think it's in the spirit of what Orin, you're saying is that we should do, but the beginning about I'm just not comfortable passing any policy in which we're opining on what is more or not serious in one way or another. I mean, our nation and the entire world has been dealing with something that their opinion is it's more serious than the food. So I'm not a doctor. Um, and I actually have been vaccinated, and that's COVID, and some of what I've been reassured by a lot of people is that the vaccinations are mitigating what would otherwise be serious consequences for me, and I've known people who like many of us who have had very serious consequences at some point of past at young ages thirty-five, forty, twenty-eight, and that is just really devastating. So I'm not comfortable with any policy that's going to put into it some opinion about what's the nature of health. I think we should try to be very succinct around what it is we're doing it after. So I would move to, just, just as a way to get started, is move to strike from paragraph one, so I'm, we're clear on what we're doing, those we have in front of us, recognizing that, and then ending with
In the commission.
You know.
The policy.
Yeah, I mean, you know, policy of Lennox schools, and again, you know, I can probably live with as normal learning environment as possible, but I really have been assisting many community conversations about what normalcy is. I mean, I think some of what we're seeing of why people suffer more than others is inherent in our systemic weaknesses in our healthcare system, weaknesses in our mental health care system, weaknesses in our food distribution, in our elderly, you know, so uh, normal to me, I don't want to go back to normal. I want to be better. I want us to have systems in place where we are actually taking care of our most vulnerable, and then we feel like we can do that as a community. Having said that, I think that we've done a pretty good job in Risher County and in Lennox in particular, so I'm proud of that. So I, I could probably live with something of normal as possible, but again, I feel like that's unclear, it's not concise, it's not measurable. And so I would probably say, start with the policy of Lennox, and just uh, you know, provide the children with a learning environment that is consistent with federal, you know, I think that's good. I mean, our learning environment is great, we're doing as good, as good as we can do under the circumstances. So I want to applaud the learning environment, but I didn't want to talk about what normalcy is, because we're not going back to the way we were. And if we start saying that to our children, I think we're also negating the fact that they're struggling with a lot of mental health, a lot of, I mean, I have a college student who has not done well going back to college because of the lack of ability to adjust, and I, I just don't think anybody is just going back. I think we need to move forward, so. Anyway, so if I want to just stick to my own advice and say we can size, my motion to amend would be to get to where we start with the policy of the Lennox Public Schools is to
Can I, yeah, Ryan, you can just cross that entirely and just say the policy of Lennox Public Schools is to limit its COVID mitigation strategy.
Yeah, that's perfect, right. Okay, and it, because again, I think that that's what we're going to do. I mean, we don't have to take other things. So maybe to keep it clean, if I just make that, um, motion to amend, paragraph one, there may be other amendments, but maybe to, to make that motion to amend, see if anyone seconds it, and if we can move forward, then maybe that'd be a cleaner way to do it.
Can I get a read about amendment?
It'll, it'll start with the word done, the policy.
The policy of Lennox Public Schools is to
Like I said, it's not to say there might not be other proposed amendments, but maybe that'd be just a quick break start.
Is this, is this the only change you want to make in this?
Um, no, but I wondered, because there may be others that are more debatable, I wonder if we want to see if we agree to that one, and then we can, because of the way we have to use rapid stroke of order, I'm wondering
Yeah, no, I, right, right, right. I didn't know he wanted other suggestions for right now, if you want, or.
My brain isn't working on that.
Okay. Truth be told. Okay, so we have an amendment on table. Is there any discussion?
There's a second.
Oh, is it seconded? I'll second it.
So I, I have a, we're very nice amendment, which, which I support for the reason you outlined, Ronnie, uh deleting the language at the beginning of the paragraph. My question is around part that is still remaining after the amendment, specifically the word limiting. So we're still saying you, Lennox Public Schools will be limiting its COVID mitigation strategy, rules, policies legally required by federal, state, and local authorities. I, I, I think about understanding what that means. Does that mean that we're doing no more than the minimum required? In other words, you know, how would this play out in terms of where we are right now? Does that, or we then uh, we've met the threshold established by Desi at LMHS, so are we then bound to go seek a waiver um, and consider unmasking? Is that, is that part of the intention?
We would be, as I mentioned, I, I think, putting in that we would want to wait till March fifteenth on that, or March fourteenth on that would make sense. So that would be, I guess that's a separate amendment.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, my challenge too is that if you want to let even just the word limit, like, it, I'm not telling anyone what to vote, but if we decided to agree to this part, that doesn't preclude anybody from then changing another word, and then changing that, and, and it doesn't also comp, uh, obligate anybody to vote in favor of it once it's done. It's more about trying to
Yeah, I think just to, to your question, just to clarify why I wanted to structure it this way, I, I think beyond the kind of formal challenges, you know, we, we sort of have our list of a few things. My perception at least has been that there's also just an ongoing issue of freelancing, where individuals feel like, you know, well, I'm going to do this or that because it's going to mitigate COVID. Uh, and I think it's really important that we have a policy that says, no, no, we're gonna, we're obviously complying with all the laws, and then there's going to be a clear list of things that we are going to do related to COVID. It's not going to be everyone kind of make it up as you go along.
Okay, so let's move forward. Is there any more discussion about the wording, Ronnie's? A minute. None, off the vote, because this is a, we have negative vote, this will have to be a roll call vote. Orin?
We're in cast five. Hold on, Todd.
Christine, Mar, I.
Veronica, oh, sorry. Veronica, sent in my.
Megan?
Megan Kirby, I.
Okay, to that part.
So further discussion.
I have the same question that Christine, that Dr. Morrow brought up regarding the word limiting. And, and I'm, I'm kind of twisted around with the kind of, you know, the word legally required by state, federal, local authorities, because that would eliminate our ability to that, if I'm reading it properly, that would mean we would only follow mandates and not guidance uh as written. And I have some concerns about that in terms of, in terms of a couple of the word limited. Um, you know, it, it it, it actually is it only, I mean, it's highly limited, you know, there, there's no there's no option or no choice on, on how we could proceed.
And if I can add, I think when you say legally required, that even more the phrase together, David, if I can agree with you, is there are many areas in which we have discretion, right? So we've been trying to follow this balance of mandates and discretion, and many of the studies, and I read way too many, in every direction of this issue, talk a lot about the local, the need to be at a somewhat local level, that what is happening in Alabama, what's happening in California. It, it's anecdotal, and I think we take from what's happening in the Netherlands or England, you know, we take it, but it, it, when we look at our numbers here, and they've gone from when I literally saw zero in Lennox, to we went up to two, three hundred, and then we're back down to a hundred, or wherever we're at, I think right now the numbers are correct, we're around ten percent in Lennox. Um, I think that we do have to think in terms of where do we use discretion when numbers are high or low. So the legally required, yeah, our job is to follow the laws. We do a lot of things in our community that are necessarily required. So I struggle with that as well.
Mark, I, I think it'd be helpful to get from the administration's perspective, to what extent you would prefer a policy that's clean and crisp versus one that is more sort of based in discretion.
Um, I mean, it's hard to, to say definitively, because it's kind of vague in the way that it's phrased. Um, I mean, we do like right line policies as much as possible. I think that it does make things more uniform, consistent, and easier to implement. Uh, but at the same time, um, there's definitely value for us as administrative team to have some flexibility um, to also deal with um, policies a, as needed. So I mean, if there was a way to have both, then maybe we're being overly greedy, but um, you know, I think that that's kind of nice for us to have um, something that on a high level is pretty easy to interpret and follow, but then also does leave some discretion you know, for the administration to deal with unique cases or individual idiocy that may arise. You know, to try to give a more clear example, it might be something, you know, if we're talking about masking in certain spaces, but then not in others, um, that I think to our kids, and to our staff, and to our families sends a mixed message that in school, we have to follow this one set of rules, but then after school, what's different? Our own sports might be different, right? And so I think to the greatest degree that we can, we should endeavor to have a policy that is, has clearance application in as many possible spaces that students may find themselves so as to avoid confusion and unnecessary conflict.
Can I approach this in a different, just to digress for a second about what the, what we know the crux of the matter is? And just ask a question that I think is a little low hanging fruit. So B says LPS will continue to participate in the mass, do this routine COVID safety check, offering lethal testing, alcohol testing for families, et cetera. So is there any debate amongst our group, um, because it's in, it's in the motion that is seconded and up for debate, that that will continue? That like, this seems to me that that might be a consensus builder?
Well, conflicts with limited to mandated requirements.
But, but if we were to take that for a second, to think about whether that's a consensus that we'd say, okay, let's agree, we'll keep doing that. I don't know. I, I'm just trying to approach it because there's a lot here, and so I'm trying to come at it from if we take care of the things we agree upon, then maybe we get to the question of what we are not sure whether we agree upon.
Just for clarification, it does say that for those who wish to participate, right? Um, currently, our employees are required to participate. So there's some wide distinction
Okay.
from employees versus families.
Reading and editing as we go. So I will say that in, just in general, relative to that one, I have a hard time with leaving it to wish to, because I do think we have to know what we have going on. And I think that certainly twice, I remember suddenly going, oh gee, what's going on here? And one was Delta. Um, in the summer, when we came back and thought suddenly that we're going to need to change what we're going to do. And the other was, as people were beginning to get boosters, getting either Delta or Omicron, and learning that there's less protection than we thought. So I feel that, that the routine testing seems to have worked to help us get sense of what's happening. Um, so I would be opposed to changing that to a totally voluntary unless there was a reason within our.
Well, just to be clear, it's already voluntary for students. And we, there was an agreement with the LEA that rather than have a vaccine requirement, what would make sense would be to require that teachers are participating in the weekly pool testing, so.
All staff, not?
All staff, I'm sorry, yeah, all staff. And so what's contemplated here is putting staff back on the footing that students are already on. Um, and that's why, that's item number two here, notes that we would have to modify um, the MOA for that. I guess, I think, if I can sort of backing up for a minute, and we can, I, I think, Ronnie, your instinct about checking what people actually agree on is actually I guess, I think if I can sort of backing up for a minute, I mean, we can, I think, Ronnie, your instinct about checking what people actually agree on is actually right. Because we can word smith every sub-bullet of this. But if it's not generally speaking, the policy we want to adopt, then we we will waste a lot of time on word smithing. Um, so I think probably more helpful, probably just to get everybody in the group's perspective on it. Is this generally what we want to do, or if not, why not? And what would we like to do instead? I mean, the the premise of this was kind of as being the way to start discussion. But I think it would it would be helpful to know what policy people are looking for us to have.
So I'll jump on that and start with the common ground, right? A, we're already doing that, I think we're going to continue to do that. C, Joint Labor Management Committee, we're doing that, I think we're going to continue to do that, at least that would be my hope. B, routine safety checks, yes, I think we should be able to do that. The part about employees and mandating that, that that we can, we can talk around. So that, I have the same problems that Dr. Morrow and Mr. Remo have about the first paragraph, where limits our options. Never a big fan of legislative limiting options. In twenty twenty-one, the COVID stuff, we had a lot of success with the Joint Labor Management Committee, bringing all the stakeholders together in a small group to discuss the rapidly changing situation, because it changed every couple of days. Keep in mind, numbers and making decisions that had all the stakeholders involved were very nimble and could respond to things in a way that that you can't do with a legislative link. So, um, that's my position on this piece is I think a lot of the stuff you're already doing, the things that it seems like you want to tighten up, I'm probably not in favor.
So your preferred policy would be to simply continue doing what you're doing?
Well, I would like to, I I like the conversation about trying to relax this. And I think it's really good to now start putting some pressure on the Joint Labor Management Committee to be looking at some things and start asking hard questions like, well, why are we still doing this? When can we relax and and move that forward? This seems a little bit more prescriptive.
I have, I have a thought. Um, it's not currently in this motion as seconded and is being discussed, but there's anticipation of amending it to consider March fourteenth date. Everybody hates it when I do this, because we have these meetings. But what I'm seeing in all the numbers everywhere is this rapid decline in Omicron. But it's still at ten percent, and someone in our presentation, ten percent and seventeen percent if you're in Pittsfield or if you're in Lenox. It's it's a precipitous drop, but it's not over. And we had another member talking, someone here talking about hospitals, I think, and how full the hospital was. And the deaths have been climbing, we're not in a period of time where we've had no deaths. Um, I just wonder, I mean, what is the point of today making a decision for March fourteenth versus convening on March fourteenth? Convening the Joint Labor Management Committee, having a motion that's crafted more succinctly, and that with no disrespect to your great writing work, because I think you tried to anticipate what we're doing um, in a helpful persuasive way. And we, and we love that when I do this, but I think we're making a decision, trying to figure out a crystal ball. And I would love to have a crystal ball, but if not successfully created that, and I wonder if we shouldn't convene on March fourteen. That will be, we're coming back from school vacation, we have a chance to test, we have a chance to be in better weather, we have a chance to think about what the numbers are doing, we have a chance, hopefully, maybe, I mean, the two things I'd like to see happen between now and then is also really hoping that our Morris families who have maybe struggled with getting a vaccine, I mean, our numbers are low. I think there has been, someone can make a lot of deductions and assumptions about why families aren't vaccinating at the lower level and yet are also wanting the mask to stay in place. But I can't align that because I don't, haven't had individual conversations with people. But I I think if we can, there can be sometimes access reasons, we've had clinics, both at the community center and at Morris. But if we can get the Morris numbers up, um, to the eighty percent and Lenox sustains that and our numbers in our community get below five percent, I think we're talking about a different situation. Um, and not projecting that we think it's going to be that prematurely, uh, or saying March fifteenth, because we think all these things are going to happen. I mean, these meetings, I like to sit and have dinner with my family rather than coming to a meeting. But I think this is what we're for, for us to have those discussions based on what we have in front of us, instead of on what we think we were going to have in front of us. So having said all that, what that would cause me to do, and I'm running through my Robert's Rules of Order, is if I move to table and I seconded and we vote on that, that may solve the issue and then we could reschedule.
Ronnie, just real quick, I I do want to respectfully disagree with you. And I I I think, you know, it's our job to think of these things well in advance, right? Well thought out, having a clear and consistent policy of where we're going to go. Um, if not March, what happens in April, May, June? Do we keep pushing it off a month, a month, a month? Um, I don't see any harm in having a a written plan, so to speak. And if things change, you know, then we deal with it. Um, but I think this is really what we're what we're tasked with is is what we're talking about.
I hear you, yeah. I'm I'm also just struck by, I think it was at the last meeting when this first came up, that the specific concern was raised was that we needed time to implement a plan and to have it set in advance. And we were going to need to prepare for transitioning to kids. There was, there was a specific emphasis placed on the importance of setting policy in advance. So, um, you know, that 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 certainly seems to me to have. It was my impression that that was something that people felt was a very important way for us to proceed.
And I don't disagree with that. And I think the difference is that we have certain numbers right now, um, of where it looks like things are going down. If they continue trending that way, then we make a decision based upon numbers existing at the time, rather than once a boost of Jack will be there. That's that's my feeling about it. It doesn't mean we can't be planful, and it doesn't mean that we're not setting policy. I just think that we have certain information right in front of us that still counter indicates whether we're where we need to be. And a lot of public and private input, we've read many, many articles. And many are saying the CTC and the American Academy of Pediatrics are saying, let's wait a little bit longer until weather changes, we get outside, Omicron numbers are down. That's what I'm what I'm feeling about.
Yeah, I mean, one, I was looking at the districts that had applied for the waivers and received them and seeing what their situation was. I tried to read many of these, um, things. And in in one case, um, and maybe more than one case, but it's hard to get all the information from the articles you read, depending who the reporter was. Um, I believe it was Ashland High School. They established a plan on the eighteenth of October that they were going to, um, start on, uh, December thirteenth. So they they set a date in advance, um, they had certain guys. And then when it got to be December ninth, they actually backed off on that and pushed it to, um, January eighteenth. Um, so, you know, a a possible option could be to set the date. We have another meeting on March fourteenth, we've set it for March fifteenth and in with whatever date we have up to that point, it could change if we had to, but we would actually have a date in mind and take place. That's a, that's a, that's what it's, at least some districts have have set that date off to allow for, um, well, maybe they were allowed. Maybe they, maybe the district hadn't actually just got to the eighty percent. They're just, you know, when we get to eighty percent, you know, this will be, you know, whatever. There are other districts that have said they're holding off until there's fewer than so many cases in in the in the schools. And the transmission rate in the town is below four percent. And so they've actually set some guidelines like that, that, um, we'll we'll do it when we hit these these benchmarks. So, like, those are a couple of the things to think about.
Well, for short term, sure, moving to table, I think what I'd like to do is make a motion to amend the po- the motion that's in front of us, make a motion to amend in two places. Or I can do it in two separate motions, it has more to do with, I I'm going to start with the first one, I'm going to do it this way, I think it's easier, cleaner. I move to amend paragraph three of this motion as suggested by Mr. Cast to be March fourteenth rather than February twenty eighth.
That was actually something that you had mentioned in your introduction, I better know.
No, I've suggested adding March fourteenth for vaccination. I think there's still plenty of it to the schools that can be done by work by work.
So my motion was March fourteenth, is there a second for that?
Is there a second for?
I'll second.
Christine Moore, second.
So, and Ronnie, you're, it's the first day, I'm three. I think of, yeah, I guess, right, you're right, it's, oh, I'm sorry, okay, so sorry, um. Well, the period of time of when we're going to work on a plan could potentially also be to March fourteenth. But it would be, if it was reworded this way, this policy shall take full effect no later than March fourteenth. We're replacing vote, February twenty eighth for March fourteen. It would only make sense not to limit, yes, yes, that if I can make that motion out of Christine, if you would second that or not, um. Yeah, I'll I'll second that. So, I mean, it's a chat about the amendment, it also fits, um, when your question to the, um, the committee membership earlier. And I, my own thoughts, um, are aligned with with several comments that were made from by Marvin and Ronnie. I I think my major hesitation at this point is is the timing. I don't think we're quite, um, ready to make this change today. But at the same time, I acknowledge that there's a lot of reason to expect that this is the direction we're heading in. Um, and, um, and I think we want a message to our community that that we will be making changes. If not today, at some point that we anticipate will not be in the distant future. The biggest sticking point with that is is when is it? So I actually, I like the idea of having some time to get there. It's it's hard to, it's it's hard to say which date is is the right one. I actually, Bob, to to your comments about other districts, I think we had some clearly defined metrics that would be very helpful, you know, to to tell us when we've reached, um, what we've established as the, you know, acceptable place we need to, we need to be in. And I also want to bring the whole community along with us. I mean, this is an already nice, um, which I appreciate as well. But, you know, to me, just thinking about this earlier today, my my absolute top priority is to keep the school open. That is the most important thing. Um, and and right now, I do think that the masking policy is part of that. I think it's it's effective, um, for us so far. Um, but I think we are really into a new phase, uh, and so it's no longer, if school closure is no longer a risk, um, and and we believe that we'll get to a place where that that statement will be true. Um, I think it's also, I have a very high priority to make sure that the community stays together, you know, and 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 that we communicate what's happening. We don't have, you know, students who are unclear about what the policy is, um, that are, our our staff are all aware and on board. And, um, a a lot of that does does need a lot of careful thought and time to have the planning. So, yeah, so I I, March fourteenth, as as Ronnie amended, I think is is okay because I don't know what might be better than that. But I do think we should, we should really think about some metrics, um, and make sure things are trending in the right direction, you know, meaning the metrics of that one.
Any other discussion of the event? Here, then we'll call for a roll call vote, or a cast.
We're cast, may.
What much?
This is only amendment.
This is only amendment.
It's a name, how much?
May.
Christine, my, I. Veronica, and I.
Well, I'll go to Megan.
Megan. Megan Kirby, name.
Um, I will vote, um, I I feel that while I have bigger issues with this as it's written than just this date, I think pushing out the date certainly makes sense. But I I, so I I think it really has no effect, frankly, a or may of this policy. Because I think there are significantly more, um, challenging, uh, aspects of it to the, um, to the nimbleness of our ability as a district and a community to respond. I I think there are, I I think there's there, what we haven't thought out in this is, you know, pieces that have been discussed regarding, is there, do we care about what's going on in the community in terms of COVID? Do we care about positivity rates? Do we care, how do we, how do we get back on, I'm sorry, so you're, I'm sorry, that's right, well, that's right. So I will vote, uh, in support of the amendment. Sorry. Sorry, it's a day of yay, only, yeah, I'm sorry. Was waxing polar.
It's on the fourteen, just on, just on the day of.
On the final fourteen, I will vote, I will vote today.
And Bob, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I I voted yay.
So that amendment pairs.
And that's, that's consistent with what the administration was hoping would be the early stage, is that what we, your admin team was talking about?
Yeah, that's accurate. So, um, we did take this up at our last administration meeting, um, and talked about possible COVID off ramps. Um, and the date of the twenty eighth was not one of his favorite. Um, and so it was proposed to think about the fourteenth, um, to allow us two weeks after February vacation um, to watch, um, the numbers. Um, they also suggested, um, a metric, um, of looking at no more than five cases, um, in a school building. And before electing to go to a mask optional policy. So that was one of the metrics that the day throughout, um, which we've had very few weeks throughout the school year, believe it or not, where we've had only five cases, um, in each building. So that the admin team felt that was a reasonable number. Clearly not excellent, but but they did appreciate the the March fourteenth date to allow us to come back because we do it, we have some historical trend where, um, we see a spike following every break in school. Um, and so they want to allow that to subside if that would manifest itself yet again, uh, actual historical trends.
And where do we stand right now with the numbers in each building? Of course, we're under masking, so of course, but what what are, where are we right now as far as numbers in each building?
So when you, when you say where we stand in terms of the numbers, are you talking about the numbers initially today of new cases, just today? Active cases?
Well, no, because I think if people are still under their quarantine or treatment period, it's impacting what's happening in the buildings, right? I'm a man of higher economy, so I don't want to, I don't know if you want to define that way, but if we have people who can't come back because they're sick of quarantining and also people who are new.
And I want to try to make it as lea- like least confusing as we possibly can, because we do count it in multiple ways. Um, the active case count is hard because people coming in and out of these periods, and so it's it's shifting all the time. So that one is is very hard to pin down because it's a moving target. The one that, the one we tend to put the most credence behind is the daily case count, and that's new cases. However, we learn about them. So that might be the nurse tested someone this morning and found positive. That might be, you know, somebody's mom called and said, back from school today, they're going to challenge COVID. Uh, that might be, you know, cool testing results, you know, in that little test. So however we learn about it, we don't really care how we learned about it. But the fact that we now know today about a new case, that's the ones we count day over day. Um, and today, um, we had a tremendous day, we had. And today we had a tremendous day. We had no cases in your school. Yesterday, we had four cases at Morris. But no students or staff, I mean, no super staffs at the LMHS and no staff cases at Morris. So. As of today, no new active cases were reported from student or staff needed to go today.
So Dr. Gals, when you say about number, you know, more than five cases in the building, what was the timeframe? Was that five cases in a week?
In a week. Yes, sorry. Yes. In a week.
Yes, there'll be five new cases. So you might have one on Monday, two on Tuesday.
Five times. Five new case counts in a one.
Yes.
So with that, talking about the main the motion as it's as it's written now with the two amendments.
Bob, am I allowed to amend my own motion to pin up other things we've been talking about?
You may.
Oh, great. Like we just saw, well, terrific. I didn't I didn't know.
Saves me.
To 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 admit errors, whatever. All right. Well, then I would like to first of all, to take essentially what Mark is talking about and what it sounds like the administration supported into account. Introduce an amendment which would add a new subsection one D. So this is the list of. Measures we are still taking. And that would be. LPS will attest to LMHS eighty percent vaccination rate as soon as possible. But postpone transition to a mask optional policy until March fourteen.
Which coincidentally is almost two years to the date of when we actually first went to COVID.
That's right.
Can you just say that again?
Uh LPS will attest to LM LMHS's eighty percent vaccination rate as soon as possible. But postpone transition to a mask optional policy until March fourteen.
Do you have any?
Uh almost.
Just for clarification, that is a approach that the number of districts around the state have realized. They have. Went ahead and submitted for their attestation form saying, yes, we have a building or two, you know, in a non-sub district. That is that eighty percent, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they take any action. It's just saying that. Yes, we're acknowledging that we're there in these big old buildings. So two things.
So I have a reading motion. To add subsection one D that LPS on its own will attest LMHS's eighty one percent vaccination rate ASAP. Excuse me ASAP, but postpone transition to a mask optional policy until March fourteen. No second to that. I'm sorry.
I don't know the date when it did.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it.
So we're voting on the amendment, right?
Yes.
We're discussing.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, like. Is this? Do we want to?
We have a discussion. Very normal call for a roll call.
One thing I was thinking of, just. The way that has been amended, does that mean it is going to affect even if the numbers were not just.
No, no, that just gives that just allows the state to say, yes, you 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 get the adestation. Send in the adestation, you've done it, and you just get permission from the state to do it. Yeah. You know, it doesn't. It doesn't require us to do it. It just gives, you know, because a lot of districts have gone out without the approval of heaven.
I think the way this is worded, it would be in effect from the fourteenth. That's what would be happening. If we if we have a policy that included subsection D. I believe as far as I'm reading it, that decision is made and it starts the fourteenth.
Yes.
I mean, I I think D.C. guidelines, I don't know what maybe maybe we already know this, if it goes to below, so this, let's just. Use that crystal ball I haven't invented yet. And we get to March twenty first and now we're below or even March fourteenth and we're below eighty percent. The attestation is no longer valid, but we can't put it down.
I guess if we added a bunch of students, maybe.
Yeah, how does how can it become unjustified?
Well, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I was just.
We can't have a crystal ball and we can't go backwards.
The three or four parameters.
This is mad. I'm sorry. Thank you for that. I think I'm trying to think in terms of metrics and so that was what was causing the I apologize.
Wait, can you read it one more time?
Yeah, I'm sorry. At subsection one D, Linux Public Schools will attest to LMHS's eighty one percent vaccination rate ASAP. But postpone transition to a mask optional policy until March fourteen. So March fourteen, you're transitioning to that mask optional policy.
We go with the numbers.
As it reads.
Well, this to me adds a concern. I think there's a missing piece, which is. Except that we need acceptable metrics. March fourteen and we. So in the faulty way that we're doing this.
Did I amend the amendment?
Technically. I think I technically, yes. Yeah, I think you're second.
I seconded the first. I seconded. Amendment, so. I think we vote on this first and then do the amendment to the amendment.
I think. Um now I wish I had a little.
Yeah, we can do that one.
I believe that we have to vote on this amendment and then one can amend. The amended motion as many times as one wishes to amend an amendment. However, this amendment must first pass or fail on its merits.
There you go. And we're all.
Okay, so.
So. If you want to amend this, how Bob Lynn wants to amend this, which way do you vote?
Well.
Or doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Why do you have a long?
I know, but you want to amend this and then.
Well, right now we just have to vote on this amendment and then Bob will tell us what.
Okay, because for example, if it doesn't carry, then Bob could introduce a new motion.
So I will have a comment.
What if it does carry? Then he amends the.
Yeah.
He could.
So it doesn't matter.
Right. Then we now have a one D, then you have to go back.
So if it doesn't matter, it passes or fails, why do you have to vote?
Because Robert, to the order says we have to.
So I'll make I have a comment to make. I I I don't necessarily know it's necessary. Because it's it's the 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 overall policy. Says the way it's written that we have to because that we would have to at a certain day. Transition the students to mask.
Because of the upper because of the paragraph above, except we haven't passed this. So this is not anything other than we're working on.
Just pointing it out.
Yeah.
So I don't know that it's necessary. I I I really don't know. That it's that that it's really necessary.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it it. I I mean, if if. I I think the the, you know, it. The necessary portion would be we would need to. We would need to attest to a to and actually putting a specific percentage in that doesn't totally make sense. We would. We would want to indicate that it that that once it's within the threshold, we would attest. Um because what if it means eighty two percent, you know, so you want to say eighty percent or above, eighty percent or above.
I mean, does that mean that the eighty percent?
Yeah, so I I I just don't think it's necess- I'm sort of that's my comment. I don't think it's necessary.
It seems that the. The only purpose of this is to make sure that that step is taken. And.
But it has to be the way it's written. You have to take that step because it's not amended. It's not legally required federal, state and local. Um of a policy. It's it's, you know, you have to do it.
You know, I'm not. Oh, no, I'm not sure that we have to do it. Because we could hit eighty five percent vaccinated and just decide that we don't want the superintendent to get the adestation if we want us to stay as a community. Mask. So I don't think that. I don't think that anything that's written here says we if we have to do that. I think that this is. I think this would be a step in the administration will establish a plan for transitioning from current policy. This policy under number three. Kind of covers this. This kind of says you have to go ahead and do it as soon as possible. You have to vote for the adestation as soon as possible.
All right, well, Mr. Sherman, if. I guess I'd like to make a clarifying comment first of all. Which is that. The piece of this is in here. I I think. You could probably take out the adestation element. And just say we're postponing mask option. We're just saying that we're setting the mask optional date. I think in the interests of. In in the interest of. Clarity, it's helpful to say what we're going to do. But more importantly, I I'm concerned that this body is not actually making progress toward conveying a policy that we'd like to have. So. Uh I'm going to withdraw the motion if that's allowed.
The the amendment or the.
I mean, yeah. I'm going to withdraw the amendment and I'm going to ask everyone in the room to say what they would like to do about. LMHS and then. We can write something that says that, but I'll go first. I would like to adopt.
You're you're withdrawing this very most recent amendment.
Yes.
So can I just thought those are what about the underlying voting?
Sorry. What?
Yeah, so that if you redone that amendment, what we're left with is we're still on the topic, which we must continue and come to a vote of your first motion. That's where we are.
We're still on the motion because Bob asked for a motion to start the discussion. I would like us to reach a policy that we are comfortable with. That is going to convey clearly to the community our approach to an off-ramp COVID. And I'm frustrated by the. Genuinely small share of this evening's conversation that has worked toward consensus on that issue. So as one key element where there clearly. Is a question and we need to decide what we are going to do. I would like to understand what the committee would like to do about LMHS. The eighty percent threshold and current testing policy. My view is that we should adopt what. Mark has conveyed is the administration's preference, meaning that we do attest, we have achieved it. As of March fourteenth, assuming that. Or the first time thereafter, when we have a week with five or fewer cases at LMHS. We shift to a mask optional policy. We can. We can figure out the wording, but it would be just good to know if that is something the committee would like to do.
Can can I clarify though? If I can just clarify with you, Mark, because I'm just not sure if I'm. Been had a lot of wars, talking a lot of conversation. I think I'd go to Orange say that it was your administrative recommendation that we pass a policy that goes into effect on the fourteenth and that I'm not. Clear that that's how I heard you say that.
So the administration said that if there were to be a policy that they would not want it to take place anytime before the fourteen.
Okay.
Um I they didn't. They didn't. Yeah, March fourteenth. They did not say that. Hey, we really want to get, you know, a policy in place. It was more of if. We have this policy, what are we doing? The best ways to implement it, what would we support if you want to make any. Uh change suggestions to a a policy about optional masking because. It was shared at the last meeting that we were going to, we have a means to discuss optional masking. But I can't say with any degree of certainty without reconvening the team that. If it was tabula rasa, that they would say. Yes, definitely go in this direction. They might. I don't know, but I think we would have to make a meaningful, more prudent answer. So I don't want to speak for them and. Risk misspeaking on their behalf.
Well, could you share your own opinion?
Can I share my own opinion? So. When you ask me in my own opinion, help frame it a little bit more. My own opinion.
That it would be useful for the committee to set a policy that we should attest to. LMHS achieving the eighty percent vaccination rate and. Great mask optional policy as of March fourteenth for the first week thereafter when we have had fewer than five.
I mean, I I would think right now that it would be the most useful would be to wait until we get the. Direction from D.C. in the state and then talk about the policy. I don't know if we need to have a policy. In place necessarily ahead of time. It seems as if the political winds are shifting in that direction based on what we've seen in neighboring states. And so. You know, I I don't know if there's any desire to hurry up and rush and get a policy done just to see if we have it on the books. But at some point we may need one. So. If we're here, we want to put one together so that we have it on the shelf and people will come and use it.
Well, I'm very disappointed to hear you citing the political winds shifting as a determinant in policy setting. I think I would like. To see the committee providing clear guidance on. Uh what we actually think is in the best interest of students and if the committee. Does not believe that we are in a place where high school students, even though D.C. says they can. Pass, then I suppose that could probably be the end of the meeting for this evening, or we should probably figure that out. Before we go through any more amendment.
Um I I I'm gonna make a motion that we table this issue to March fourteen.
If I can speak for a moment, I'm I'm disappointed that we've gone an hour and a half now with massive confusion. If I'm confused as a board member. I can only imagine what the attendees are feeling. There's been a lot of back and forth kind of questioning on on the the process here. And again, I want to go back to the what I find is a bizarre opposition to looking in the into the future and planning ahead. I've heard so many times that our staff and faculty and students and families deserve to have a heads up about what's to come. There will be changes coming, whether it's March, April, May, June. And we're really contradicting ourselves. What is the hesitancy of coming up with a game plan, even if it's a rough game plan? I can't wrap my head around my fellow committee members not being on board for basically doing our jobs.
I think what it comes down to, Megan, is that. We don't think the motion as written. Was the right was the perfect motion. And. Anytime you're editing something in a committee and wordsmithing it, you know, you can see we've had three or four amendments. So. I think the committee's. This frustration because we haven't come up with something, but I think the committee's discussions, deliberations all have to. Be a major part of this conversation. You know, we didn't. We haven't come up with something in an hour and a half, but. It doesn't mean that we won't come up with something, but it's not. It it doesn't look like it's going to be tonight.
And to reiterate that we are a governing body that is. Written by the rules of order. This is what we do. This is what we're supposed to be doing. And the person who gave the motion didn't withdraw it. So we're working with the document in front of us. I think. I'm not saying I have a perfect motion at this point, but I don't have the right to vote one because right now we have a motion that's that seconded. That is being debated that the only options are to withdraw or to table. And my motion was to table it because I don't think we're there. And if we table it and it's seconded, then I think we go back, but. You know, with all due respect, I don't think it's and I and I really take exception to the concept that we're not trying to do our best by our community. We are a governing body that has to do things in a way we have to do them. So I think there's been a lot of conversation and really strong understanding of. Input from community members, physicians, we've read a million. I've read articles for three days, some from you, some from Horn, some from. The community and there isn't a clear standard as to what we should do. So and we have people who are sick. As you know very well, and other people who are still in the hospital and dying. So I don't think anybody's being glit or irresponsible. We have a process and. If the community is struggling with understanding that process, we are here, transparent, open and prepared. To listen and talk about it. And that's the way we we govern. I think we've had great respectful conversation about what are the parameters we want to do. I think. It may be. Bulky. And unclear and not smooth and comfortable, but it's definitely a dialogue. It just might not be the way that some people want to do it. And that's where we are.
So is it is your motion to table in front of the committee or is?
Well, my motion is to table and seconded would.
The vote is taken is non-debatable.
It's not.
If if it's seconded, it's not debatable.
Is that in the discussion for the evening or in the discussion on this particular?
We have the discussion on this motion. We have the discussion on this motion.
Okay.
At this time.
So a new motion could be raised and still in meeting tonight?
Yes, yeah, I won't leave that meeting.
I will second Ronnie's motion to table.
Okay, so there's no debate on this motion, so we'll call for a roll call.
Orin cast, aye.
Boba, aye.
Christine, aye.
Veronica, aye.
David, aye. Megan Kirby?
Megan Kirby, aye.
Okay, so we take that. I suggest. I see if we can get a meeting next week. Yeah, continue the discussion, is that seen?
Yeah, may I make another request though, if we do it next week, we're in the week before school vacation.
Yeah.
And then we are also waiting to hear from. Other powers that be that may make, make the situation move, in which case, there's no need, um, and. We don't know, we know they're meeting on Tuesday, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, so would it make more sense to meet on March first? Which would be the Tuesday after school, the kids return, students return from school, Tuesday, I think we do pool testing and. A bunch of other testing, they can meet next week on March, oh, excuse me, February fifteenth. It may be another situation of some of us feeling like we need more information, and that might feel more frustrating.
I guess my feeling is. If we meet next week, we can perhaps come up with. A policy that we vote on or not, who knows, how to vote or not, but that we will. We'll give a little bit more time, um, to. If we, if we do decide that March fourteenth is going to be a date that we unmask the high school, for example, that we. That's known prior to waiting till after vacation. And, and I think that if we do it on Tuesday, we will avert from the commissioners. It may avert from the government, we definitely avert from the commissioner, it may either sue him.
But we don't know definitely, but we just know they're meeting on Tuesday.
We know they're meeting, but, and the, the. The things that flashed across my screen today said that, the governor said that the commissioner's likely to make a decision very soon, now.
I support trying to meet next week.
Would the fifteenth work for people?
Yes.
Would it be, would it be a five thirty?
Do you have, um, do you have labor negotiations?
Oh, we have negotiations on it, how about Wednesday, the, whatever that is?
Sixteen.
Why would we have a term of sixty?
I, I will as well. I, I propose we meet on March first.
Okay.
It's not your labor management.
Well, well, we, we can. We can meet on March, we can meet on February, we have a.
Going to school vacation.
Oh, they are not, you're not bad for the.
No, no, it's not about my vacation, it's, the school vacation is the twenty second through the twenty fifth, there's, there's no.
Right.
So we put it on the agenda between?
Well, Ronnie's not bad for that, she won't be, she won't be bad.
And don't we have a full agenda for that day, so if we did March first, we don't, or do you have labor negotiations?
Yeah, negotiations.
March, we have negotiations.
What about, what about Thursday?
Thursday.
Which Thursday?
The tenth.
This Thursday? Yeah, I'm not available.
Are you on account then too?
And also, we talked about potentially hearing from Desi, uh, which they're meeting.
The, the seventeenth, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong week, the seventeenth.
I mean, it does work for at least one member, I don't know.
Well, before we give up, I don't know if I have a side, is there a basic. Motion we want to put forward, we can also say that essentially gives the administration guidance and asks them to. Consider especially develop a policy, so if there's, I mean, we have this basic. March fourteen, subject to fewer than five cases in the school. Right? We could just adopt that, and then, I think that would accomplish a lot of. People have said they're looking for in terms of sending a clear signal to the community, giving people opportunity to do some planning. Um, having a metric so that we're not still in the middle of a spike, having to gap after vacation. And then, if, to Ronnie's point, you know, the crystal ball, if something happens, we can always schedule another meeting, but that then. Sets it the baseline, at least as of right now, that seems like the best course forward, and if we need to deviate from that, we will.
I, I would agree with you on that, I think that, and, and I think that we could take the time between now and then. To perhaps think about the mechanism that would work. Um, you know, what, what is a week? Um, what if we have a spike, how long do we, you know, let's say we get six, well, then are we out for. The rest of that week and the following week, you know, there are a lot of, that, you know, is it a Tuesday to a Tuesday, or we count the week, you know, how. I, I think, or things like that, that we could work out.
That's the point, my understanding is that it's not a week to week, now maybe the masks go back on, it's a. To confirm that we are out of the surge, we don't take the step until. We are below that.
But then let's assume we have an anomaly, like I, I'm thinking, you know, what do, I'm, I'm assuming it'll be, we're out, or what if we get a spike? I don't want to, you know, what happens?
Not that, not that it's a business, we all have limited, no other policies allow it, languages don't. So everything is still on the table in the event of a spike, it would just be, right now, here's the plan that we're working toward. It's March fourteen, it's going to a mask optional policy where that's allowed, and it's only going to do it if. I, a, the prior week had fewer than five cases in the school.
So far as I understand, if there's a spike, then JLMC would be the mechanism to talk about what the response should be. Given that in reality, right, is that?
Right, and yet remember spikes, like when we use the term spike, we all knew in early December that we were going to have the.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
January spike, like, un, un, unless Berkshire happens to be the origin of the next variant. Um, spikes, who knows, spikes, spikes are on the order of weeks, not hours, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I guess the, the spike has a lot of different meanings, you know, what I was trying to get down was to the nitty gritty. You know, what happens when we have seven?
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to close the school for how long, you know, you don't want to, you want to say, okay, we find out on Wednesday, we got seven, well, how long will we close, you know?
Right.
Well, that, that type of nitty gritty.
Why don't we just ask the administration to write a policy that addresses that? And, and we have a month, right, I mean, we'll meet at least two more times before it goes into effect, we can review that. But I think that would all give them the right thing to be voting for.
And the other thing I would like to point out is, you know, based upon the survey. There's a significant number of people. In, in the middle school, and, and actually, there. A significant number of people, more than double in the middle school and the, uh, high school. You know, what I did is, I, I, I looked at the numbers and percentages, we've got five categories, I dropped out number three, and I added one, two. And, and, and four and five, you know, and, and you look at these numbers, and, and I, and I think. It would behoove us to, and, and this is on, this issue of, of transitioning. It, it is on our agenda, uh, for the subcommittee tomorrow for discussion. But the majority of people in our, in our middle school and high school by far. Uh, advocate indoor masking. Optional masking is split, essentially, it's fifty fifty. And, and I think that's something we need to take into consideration. In some way.
Okay, so. I stepped out of the room for a second, so I didn't catch exactly what.
I, I would make a motion, I think, for the experience and. Earlier, it would be more helpful to just figure out if this is what we're doing, and if so, what people want the wording to be, and then we can make and pass a motion. But it would just be helpful for people to know, to, it would be able to know if people would rather. Creating motion now that essentially accomplishes, that says things we just discussed, March fourteen. Fewers in five cases in a week. Administration to create a plan for how that is defined. And, I mean, how, how it would be implemented.
I'm, I'm in support of that, I think it's missing, I think we need to add more around community positivity rates. Boston, for instance, has, has come out today and cited the one five percent. Community positivity rate, so that speaks to things outside of just our, you know, our internal walls. I have a comment. Before Orin's adjusted, the administration come forward with policy, we're going to suggest that perhaps each school committee member. Almost of what the list of things that they want to see in the policy, and, um, see how many of those are common.
I think it's a great idea, I just don't know, within the, within the rigid rules of the process, can we actually? Make, make any?
Well, why don't, and if you're pointing out the threshold fifteen, why don't we actually, whether it's five cases in the school is what, if it's a final landing point or not. Why don't we just ask the administration, and, and they'll presumably also have a JLMC meeting to review it. Define, here's what the thresholds are going to be, so we would just say. It's, it's our policy or even just our goal. To move to optional masking as of March fourteenth. Where it is permissible under Desi guidelines, subject to thresholds established by the administration in consultation with the JLMs.
Sounds good, that sounds great.
All right, let's try to, I'm trying, I'm trying to write.
All right.
So is this a motion?
Well, we're going to write it first, and then we're going to make the motion after everyone likes it, so we don't have ready to bank.
I have to tell you, you know what would be really helpful, is if we have these, if you have these motions projected on screens.
Well, I. It would be real smart forward, is what you want, you want it smart forward?
I, I guess, if, if I can just say one thing though, because I think we're struggling, but there seems like some members say, no, we're not leaving here till we write it. Nope, not going to do it, right, and I can see the efficacy, I can see the purpose of that. But what we're asking is that the administration and some people in the subcommittee, could be the TLC, could be the JL, directly our management committee. Create the motion with the thresholds, create the policy, and then when we need again, and it may be possible, I wouldn't even be there, so we'd be like clapping for that. We then vote on that policy, I think what we're trying to do is come up with something we're all going to agree with. But then we have to go into voting mode, and I don't think that, I think it would be better to say, let's move the issue forward. We've had a pretty strong airing of all the opinions, and have a motion, a policy to vote upon. At our next meeting, which I believe is scheduled for February twenty eighth. And that could be number one item on the meeting, and I think that makes more sense than a sports method.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's what we have to decide on, I think this is. I think there's at least certainly some support within the committee for doing something now, so we should vote, it can go up or down, and then we'll adjourn or. Unless anyone has other business.
Um, I have other business.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But so, so, um. I guess, Christine, does this cover, if we were to say LPS will shift to an optional masking policy where permitted by Desi guidelines as of March fourteenth. Subject to thresholds developed by the administration in consultation with the JLMC. Does that sort of cover?
Yeah, I think it's definitely.
Okay, well, then I will introduce a motion.
I'm sorry, just kind of ask, so I can.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I will.
Like nice and slow, I'll write it down.
Do the motion.
Okay.
I move that LPS shift to an optional masking policy where permitted by Desi guidelines as of March fourteen.
Hold on, hold on a second.
Yeah. Permit by Desi guidelines.
As of March fourteen. Subject to thresholds developed by the administration in consultation with the JLMC. Developed by the administration in consultation with the JLMC. Much more succinct.
And I think that gets at that balance of some clarity, right, but then also some discretion, which I think was, we would really hope to put our heart to hearts, so.
Do we have a second?
I don't have a second.
Discussion. Discussion.
Motion by, um.
Maggie, sorry, Maggie, can you hear her again?
Yep.
Seconded by Robert Munch, that Lenoxville schools will shift to an optional masking policy where permitted by Desi guidelines. As of March fourteenth, subject to thresholds developed by the administration in consultation with the JLMC. So, that isn't limited to LMMHS.
But it's not.
Yeah, right, now, Desi loves, uh, the mandate, then, yeah. Or more stress.
Yeah, okay, everyone good for? Vote, yeah. Or cast, or cast aye, Bob Munch, aye.
Christine, aye.
Maggie, aye.
David, aye. Megan Kirby?
Megan Kirby, aye.
To vote.
I've voted from this year.
I'm sorry?
You're not voting.
Well, the six of them. I would accept the motion to adjourn.
I, I move that we adjourn, I second that.
Roll call, vote.
Or a cast, aye.
Bob Munch, aye.
Christine, aye. It's not.
David, aye. Megan Kirby?
Megan Kirby, aye.
Yeah, I hope you feel better, Maggie.